This is a regular board meeting of the Silver Consolidated School Board of Education. It is Monday, June 18th, 2018. The time is now 6:16 PM. Apologize for getting a late start here, but we got more signatures required than I anticipated. So, welcome, members of the board, members of administration, staff, members of the public, friends, family. You will all join me in standing for the pledge allegiance and a New Mexico flag salute.
(Coughing) 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 Thank you, Mrs. Hernandez. If you would conduct a roll call for us, please.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mrs. Montenegro?
Here.
Mr. Khan?
Here.
Dr. Diaz?
Mr. Flores?
Here.
Thank you all again for being with us this evening. Next up or first up on our agenda is review and approval of minutes from our May 21st work session and our May 21st regular meeting. Members of the board, if you haven't had a chance to review, please review at this And if anybody has any corrections, please...
Mr. President, when I was looking over the regular meeting minutes, I was just wondering if...my memory did not jog...it may not serve me correctly, but when we were doing the vote for the SHOS, I wasn't sure that that motion actually got a second or if it actually died. Would you...do you recall?
On the motion to table?
Yes.
And that was the...I had a correction there as well because I misspoke during that meeting. I said the motion dies when actually the motion failed.
Okay.
I believe would be the correct term because it was voted down.
Right.
The motion to table. So, instead of the motion dying, if there was no second, then the motion would have died.
Okay.
Since there was a second in the vote, I believe the motion technically failed.
Okay. I can live with that. So, is that how it's worded here?
It says...it actually says motion dies, and that was...again, that was my fault because I had mentioned that during the meeting. So, I will make that correction that the motion failed, I think is the correct term.
Okay.
In the regular meeting for...the motion was made by Dr. Diaz, I believe.
Right.
Any other corrections or edits from the board? I will entertain a motion to approve our May 21st, 2018 work session minutes and our May 21st, 2018 regular board minutes with the edit noted.
So moved.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you. Next is consideration and approval of our agenda this evening. Does anybody have any comments on our agenda, revisions? Yeah, I can say the only question I had was under individual...actually...I'm just curious under Board of Education, Board President, all these first readings for the policy service advisories. I just don't know that...because we've got first reading for policy advisory number 150, but we're actually...the recommendation is to delete that policy. So, I'm wondering if that just needs to be deleted from the agenda as well.
Can you just strike it?
Strike that from the agenda?
I would just strike it.
I don't know because it's...does it need to be...first read as an omission?
Yes.
Do you think it needs to be...this is my only thing that needs to be...
If I put it on it, it'll be taken out of it.
That makes sense as well.
So, it's currently there and we're getting rid of it?
Yes.
So, it'll be a deletion.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments on our agenda this evening? I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda as presented then.
So moved.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve our agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you. Next on our agenda is information and presentations. These are non-action items, program presentations. And first up is New Mexico Department of Transportation Resolution and Bond Project Update from Mr. Ward. Welcome, Mr. Ward.
Mr. President, board members, Superintendent Brown, Linda Candy, Michelle. I think I hit everybody. There's not...before I get into bond stuff, there's not a lot of updates on it, but there are a few things that I can probably bring you up to speed on. Would like to talk about a couple of action items, and one is the resolution for the Department of Transportation grant. If you remember, we had an unusually large grant for fiscal year 2018-19. It was $88,000 to be responsible for around, I think, 25 percent, which is $22,000, and the state would then turn around and give us 66. So, I recommend that we pass the resolution for that, and that goes towards finishing of Stout's Silver Parking Lot. Should put a big dent in that and save us a lot of bond money because that's where we had originally planned on funding that completion through. The other one is the results of the bid for renovations and repairs to Ben Altamirano Complex. And those renovations were for repairing all of the walkways, handicapped areas, ramps, the slopes around the first base and third base lines of the Boys' Varsity Field and the first base side of the Boys' JV Field. There's an awful lot of erosion going on there. There's a bit of life safety hazard type stuff for lack of a better way of putting it. People could trip. Big concern there for me, though, is the continued degradation of the facility itself. Stairs on the bleachers are already sitting at angles. Bleachers, footings are all exposed. If we don't deal with something with it now, it obviously will be more expensive later. So, at Mr. Flores's, Mr. Brown's request, we went ahead and looked that out to bid. Local contractor was the low person running construction, but I would recommend to appreciate your consideration and hopeful approval of that so we can get that on the horn. That will probably go into the beginning of next year as far as the construction aspect itself. Really shouldn't have any effect on any of the school activities or anything like that going on out there. But those are the two action items. Bond stuff, still the same bond projects. At Cliff, we've got the gym floor that is scheduled now. I know it's scheduled to be...to start that work the beginning of July after they get done with their summer basketball programs or activities that they're using the thing for. We've already started their playground. They're doing all the site prep and stuff now. We're expecting the materials to show up next week, and they'll start the installation process. So, that's moving along fine. The fencing piece of that, we're still working on. It has been drawn, and we have gotten the permits through on it, and it will just pick up and become a part of what the C-MAR does this summer. That's the goal on that one. We have everything finalized for the playground at OHS for the pre-K school. That's scheduled to start the beginning of January...or of January...of July. And the bathrooms, we've already started renovating those for the little kids and doing that. And the only other thing is the big...is the elephant in the room, and that's the big bond project, and that's the big here, and HHS. And that is moving along fine. They showed up Friday and started their setup and stuff. So, they're mobilizing, getting things going, setting up office space, that type of thing, getting things programmed in. Numbers are falling within our expected budget, and we have some things that we're still not satisfied with for some aspects of the overall project. We have a meeting Wednesday to go over what some of that stuff is and try to rectify that, but it's moving along fine. But that's the big bond projects. There are other things that we're doing that are of significance, like the LED project that's moving along faster than I had thought it would be. I anticipate it being done this summer without much difficulty. They've already finished La Plata, the high school, and Harrison Schmidt, except for some onesie-twosie items, which are only not done because they have not yet received certain materials. But as it gets here, they'll fall back and take care of those things. So, I'm pretty happy with that. Ran numbers both by hand, old school, and through PNM's savings calculators for what we're doing, just to verify and try to confirm what we could be expecting as far as savings of general funds, and it's still looking right in $147,000, $145,000...$147,000, $145,000 on an annual basis. So, it's still looking pretty good. So, I'm real happy with that one, but it's moving along well. Some of the other things that we're doing are the entry security piece where we're putting in cameras, intercoms, and electronic latches. All that material is ordered. It should be delivered. I think...I don't know about the delivery date, but it ships on the 28th. End of this week, beginning of next week, they're going to start all the wiring and stuff to have it already. So, as soon as the material gets here, we just install and be done with it. But that's all moving along fine. That came in unexpectedly. As far as I thought, the cost was going to be more, but it looks like it will be between $20,000 and $25,000 to do the entire district at all eight locations, which I thought was a pretty reasonable cost. At the high school, we have some other things through the last year's DNT grant, our DOT grant. We have the two drive approaches going into the student and faculty parking lots, which I guess now are really both the faculty or the student parking lots, but there are two drive approaches there. One, the main entrance, we're going to basically do it in anticipation of everything that we're looking at doing when we redo the parking lot through the bond projects. So, we've got that on play. We're doing some stucco repair and exterior painting at La Plata. We have some air conditioning issues that we're dealing with and some flooring. But that's kind of where we're at, and if you have any questions, I'll answer as best I can.
Questions from the board?
I guess we hired a C-MAR. We have one in place. And then you already have the plans and everything for the...
It's all planned and permitted.
So, it's like they're ready to start?
It's moving. We're just finalizing figures and working to make sure we have all the scope right, and then we're working on scheduling and the sequencing of events. There are certain things particularly...these are both at the daycare and Harrison Schmidt. These are going to continue through the school year, but there are certain things that you're going to want to make sure, particularly a Harrison, that are done before school starts. I mean, you don't want to start the kitchen and not have it done when school starts, that kind of thing. So, we're working on scheduling to make sure that we hit our target dates for those critical items and that type of thing. But it's going to be just ongoing meetings.
Are we going to, again, just let our constituents know that the GO tax dollar we put aside last year in front of the construction project stating that that was the goal?
We still have the signs from last year's. We'll be setting those up as well.
Awesome.
And as soon as I started taking photographs, but there's not a lot going on yet to do photographs with, but we'll still be looking at doing the imagery on the website.
Awesome. That's...Mr. Ward, I was just checking to see if there was anything online yet. I think that was nice to have last year when we did the projects, and I think especially for the Harrison project, it'll be neat to kind of see that project move forward.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's, I think, would be a nice touch to continue doing those.
I kept trying to figure out how to do with the LED lights, but light and light, it just didn't work. So, I wasn't sure what...
Concerning that, I've seen up at the PE complex, it looks like they did the, I call it the Annex Gym or the PE Gym. They've done those lights in there, and it's much brighter.
The flying saucers.
Uh-huh. Yeah, it's much brighter.
And we reduced the wattage of each of those fixtures by 200 watts.
And so, they'll be going through interior and exterior and completing all of that this summer?
There are some of the...some of the fixturing, we ended up figuring out on surveys after we actually hired somebody. We came out and re-surveyed it rather than just looking at PNM survey. We found a few things that they had missed that we wanted to put in, and we made some decisions about what kind of fixtures to put in. So, they ordered those fixtures after the fact. A lot of the stuff, like the four-foot bulbs, the eight-foot bulbs, the common stuff that there are just thousands of, that was an easy order. It's the onesie-twosie things that they had to fall back on and order after the fact, and that's what we're kind of waiting on, on some of that. Most of it's exterior lighting.
I just want to comment and thank Mr. Ward. We spent a morning out there at Ben Altamirano, and I'm excited because it's going to be a complete facelift. It is in bad shape right now. It's a safety hazard, and Mr. Ward's going to talk about repainting the blue in the concession stand, painting the backside of the bleachers blue, concrete, like everything he said. And we even discussed maybe in the future a phase two or a phase three, and that would be maybe some tables with some shrubbery, some trees that we...even Mr. Ward talked about a shaded area. So, when people buy something from the concession stand, they have a place to go sit down and eat it while watching the game because the way it is right now, it's...you buy and you sit in the bleachers, and that's fine, but...
There's no option.
Yeah, there is no option, and like you said, the steps leading up to the bleachers are very wobbly, and it's going to get worse. We even discussed about putting up banners like many other fields have in the outfield of the girls softball field and the boys baseball field. The girls have won eight state champions in a row, but there's really nothing to indicate it with the exception of driving into the fence, and there's some small numbers in the fence. But if you have it somewhere on the field showing our accomplishments, I think it's just a boost to the community, a boost to the students, the athletes, and just Silver Schools as a whole. You know, the people come and they see all those accomplishments, you know, like the state championships, that's amazing. And the boys, unfortunately, they don't have as many as the girls, but maybe someday they will. But we have a place for them out there. So, Mr. Ward, he brought a lot of great ideas to the table, and I'm excited.
I just looked at the original drawings.
I'm excited to see it. It's going to be a great...
The original drawings are a lot different than what's out there.
Yeah, it's going to be a great...
I'm sure that funding at the time drove how and why things were done, but there are a lot of things that really need to be done to completion so that you don't continue to have erosional problems. You want to do it so that the erosion's taken care of ahead of time, you know, things of that nature.
I would recommend, I know you probably already thought about this, taking before and after pictures because it's going to be a complete beautiful transformation. That's all I have. Thank you.
He did remind me...do you know what all that dumping is?
It's the city stuff or the counties, the roadwork. They dump all kinds of...I mean, there was six months, I think, we had two mountains of pea gravel for when they were chip seal and stuff. They just go off to the side and just make these big piles, and it becomes their work off of.
So, now, over...I'm talking about over on like the west side, you know?
Where the secure school used to be.
Yeah. That doesn't look like stuff that it's working with. It looks like...because it has asphalt and rock and dirt.
It probably do...you know, I'm not sure. It may be what...it may be some of the debris, the spoils from the roadwork that they're doing. They're looking at a place to put it temporarily until they do things, but I can touch base with them at the next transportation department meeting about what's going on with that.
Because it's been there at least six months.
I don't know what it is.
Okay. Just for soccer season coming up, we'll need that parking.
Yeah, city just uses the space for a lot of things, but I'll call Alex and see what's going on.
Okay.
One other question on the parking lot, what used to be the old staff parking lot at the high school. Is that in the next round of bond with the irrigation or drainage?
Well, whenever we do the parking lot, you know, that's all part of what's going to be redone. If you guys want to change what it's going to be used for, that's entirely up to the high school that they want to do. I know Mr. Coker has mentioned that it would be nice to convert that back to faculty parking. It's not really any big deal to do that, I don't think. It's just a decision.
What about, I mean, repaving it?
Put a degree of separation between it.
What about repaving it?
Oh, it's all good. That's all part of what we're talking about, repaving. The old faculty parking lot all the way through where the main student parking lot is.
Right.
Up to where it goes up to the football field.
But what phase?
Whenever we get into doing the high school bond projects, that'll all be tarred back to the same thing. I'm not sure whether it's going to work into next year or the year after. Part of what we're still trying to compile is a global idea of the general projects we have throughout the district that are remaining, what the costs of those are, and what would be the most cost-effective way to schedule or logistically set those things up so that we get the biggest bang for the buck, and we're not having to go back and forth and back and do this and the other thing. So, once we have a better idea of globally how those pieces fit together, we can sit down and just say, this is what makes sense to do these next, and well, the following summer, we'll pick up these and do those. And I haven't gotten that far yet. We're still working on that.
That's something that I would probably recommend we do maybe in this next phase, which would probably be next summer. I know the lower parking lot, which is primarily student parking lot, we've got a lot of drainage issues there to deal with prior to doing any kind of work and talking about economy at scale and trying to repave everything at once, but that, what I call the old staff parking lot, a lot of people are coming out of there after events and games, and I think some people are falling off the face of the earth in some of those potholes and are lost for a couple of days.
You can't keep up with it. You can't keep up with it. Well, there's a spring, actually, that runs down from the backside of La Plata and runs down that whole thing, and it actually will lift, and he rode asphalt paving from the bottom up. I mean, there's a continuing problem right there in that congregation area behind the bleachers by the concession stand. In the center of that, it just decomposes. You'll be there after a good rain, and all of a sudden, you'll be fine one day. It'll rain real hard, and then boom, it's just got a big old hole in the middle of it. When we did the last bond cycle, when part of what we did was the concrete going from Silver Street up to the main entry into La Plata, because that all used to be asphalt, but it would rain hard, and you would see water literally bubbling up from the ground just pushing the asphalt out. So, you say, well, we'll just concrete it. My God, it will lift that. That was what prompted changing that whole scenario to concrete.
Yep, and this area, I think, is away from all that drainage issue and more by the high school gym where there's some really big kind of craters, but I think the sooner we address those, the...kind of a safety issue as well. Like you're saying, in the dark, it's hard to see what you're stepping off into.
I would concur.
Other questions, comments from administration, the board?
I would just like to thank Mr. Ward for his time. This is his day off, and he just wanted to come in here and present to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Hence the Hawaiian shirt, huh?
Hey! We get the rig.
Next on our agenda and our program and programs and presentations is the update on the OHS Rio Organization. Mr. Coker, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members, Mr. Brown, Linda, Candy, Michelle. Do you have a little Coker here? A little presentation that Mr. Lomardo and I put together, just kind of give you an update on what we've been doing as far as the OHS integration over to Silver High School. Before I get started, just to let you guys know that we have been kind of, I guess, beating the path, if you will, to contact all the students that we feel are going to make that move over to Silver High School. And I'm kind of happy to report that we had one student that was kind of sitting on the fence. I even met with her. She was sitting on the fence, kind of like, you know, maybe I'll go to Aldo instead because I don't know about this Silver High School. But once we met with her, kind of told her what I'm going to present to you, how we're going to run, you know, how we're going to run the program over there. She was like, you know what, forget Aldo, I'm coming over here. So, that was a big thing for us. And Mr. Lomardo, I believe he's in San Diego. He might be in some other state. I don't know. But I know that he and his daughter are traveling all over the place, and she's trying to repress the Division One schools, so that's why you couldn't be here today. So, I'm taking notes. Excuse me. Okay, so, as I stated, we have met with the...most of our OHS kids that will be coming over. We started this in May. Mr. Lomardo's been really good about bringing kids over. They come over OHS, he brings them over to the high school, shows them exactly the layout where the 200-block pod is. Mostly been positive feedback. I don't think we've actually really had any negative feedback. I've met with about three students who say, you know what, I don't want to do the pod. Just go ahead and break me back out into the general population. I know that sounds like a criticism term, and I don't want it to sound like that or anything, but they said, I just want to be, you know, I got a few classes, that's all I got to finish. I don't see any reason why I could be put in a pod. And I said, well, yeah, we'll accommodate. So, that was really good. Most of the students provided positive feedback, and certainly feeling safe at Silver High School. All right, these are just the numbers that I asked Mr. Lomardo to gather for me, just kind of seeing what we're up against. So, juniors that are going to be seniors, we have about 18. Two or three of those are going to try to graduate in December, so about two or three of those will be done by December. Most of the seniors will only need half a day in order to graduate next spring, so that means most of them will probably come in the morning, have a job to go to, or they can do dual credit through the college or whatever, whatever they have. It'd be just like senior release does for our home seniors. We will have to take senior ELA in math face-to-face. Most have their science done. History will be face-to-face, and I'm going to go over a slide where you'll see exactly where we're going to do those face-to-face teachings. Opportunity for them to take dual credit, they choose to in the fall, and I'll also have teachers from Silver High School to come into the pod. So, they won't be...if they don't want to go to the classroom, we'll accommodate. The teachers will come to them, okay? So, and most of them, we're very open to that. So, hopefully, maybe even down the road, they'll say, you know what, I want to go to class and check it out and stuff, so...but right now, we're offering it to the teacher who comes to the pod. All right, for sophomores and juniors, right now, we have five that are going to be juniors. One did move to Alton Gordo, two's going to go to Co-Rate, and one might move to Tucson. So, now we're down to about one. So, but we'll take care of that person as well, and that person will be taking dual credit in welding. We're trying to bump up those numbers, and I'll tell you why here to bit. And if I go too fast, please stop me or advance. Okay, so, our incoming sophomores, nine total. We have one that's kind of sitting on the bench that may go to Co-Rate, do the classification. They do need more face-to-face classes. Again, those are going to be made available for them. Dual credit also be available to all those students. Now, one thing, I did talk to Mr. Lomardo, some of these kids, they took, and not just these kids, we have kids at our high school, too, took some dual credit and didn't do too well, so they're kind of on academic probation, so they do have to sit out a semester. So, some of these kids and some of my...and some of the high school kids, and from now on, I'm just referring to every student now as Silver High School kid, they'll have to sit out that semester and then take their dual credit this spring. So, it's just something out of our control that's a Western thing. Okay, so, some of the questions that were brought up by the board, their last board meeting, is which doors would they enter and exit by? Obviously, we want to keep safety and security our top priority, so...but we do open doors on the west end for when we have buses drop off, parent drop off, and horseshoe. So, what we're going to do is open up two additional doors for OHS students, now I'm going to refer to them as Silver High School students, to enter and exit by if they would choose to do so. Some of those kids were, when we talked to them, they were like, eh, I don't really care if I, you know, if I'm around a bunch of students, as long as I get to my pod, I'm good to go. We had a couple of them that did question it, so we're going to make it available for them, and I'll show you on the... And I'll show you on the next slide, on slide six, where that, that entrance will be. Where would the pod be? That's going to be in kind of our cluster, our 200 cluster, which is 200, 201, 202, and 203. Again, I have a map to show you on that one. What would the classes be used as? One of the things that Mr. Lamardo has done for me is he's gone down and talked to Western about having a professor, at least one professor, if not two, actually come to the classroom and teach a dual credit class, either business one-on-one or something in social work. So, so we're trying to get that avenue going and that's going to be something that I want to kind of place, put in place this, this semester or this year and then offer it to the rest of the students as the program hopefully grows from there. Also, we'll have one computer lab that will stay. Students said they would be willing to take at least one online class. And of course, we'll have a face-to-face classroom. So that leaves us with the fourth classroom, and this is kind of what we're talking to Mr. Potts about, is OHS has, what was it, about twenty-five desktops?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay. I'm never opposed to putting another lab in for OHS or SHS use. And as, and as far as testing goes, it'll greatly help me as well. So if we can put another lab in, we can actually have a professor, if he needs to use that lab for a kind of dual credit class, he has that available. Students need a place, a workplace, or if the testing rolls around, we can use it as a testing site. So, so that, that's an option. Okay, what about students that have children at daycare? We do have one, well, actually, we have a couple. So we have a male and a female, which are mom and dad, I guess, that has a child at the daycare and that's addressed on another slide and I'll hit that on twelve. So right now, there's only one student that would require those services. Okay, so this is the entrance I'm talking about. So if you envision the horseshoe, this is the entrance that goes right in between, I think it goes right into B Hall, so, no, C Hall, sorry. So the library is a big building right there on the left and then the pod, as soon as they walk down the hall, will be right there on the right. So it's like a quick entrance right there for them. And then there's the pod of classes where the arrows at. Does this thing have a pointer? What is this? Okay, so there's a pod right there. So this is the 200 pod right here. And this is where that entrance was, where I was talking about. So they'll come right in right there and boom, right into the pod should they need those services at. Right here, we also have the nurse, social workers, we have our school psychologists over there. So they have access to services should they need those and as well as they have quick access to the library. So figured that would be the best place because of all the resources that are available at that particular location. All right, we do have some monies coming in from the Freeport grant. It says somewhere around seventy or eighty thousand dollars in funds for students to take dual credit classes and to enhance current CTE, low-tech classes at Silver High School. Talking to Lamardo, talking to not just the kids that are coming over from OHS, but general kids at Silver High School. There's a lot of demand for low-tech, career tech-type classes. And we have, we have the interest, now we just need to make it, make the programs happen for those kids. And that's what we're primarily going to use those funds for. And we're also going to apply for the eighteen, nineteen school year grant from Freeport. And this will be available for all students that attend Silver High School. Okay, and that grant will open up September first, so I'll be sure to make sure I'm keeping an eye on it.
Mr. Coker, what is the abbreviation, CTE?
It's career tech education.
Okay.
So, okay. All right, dual credit priority is OHS for right now. We are, we are looking at increasing the number of welders in the dual credit program. Western is more than willing to work with the new setting that we have provided for. And that is including sending professors down to teach either a business one-on-one or a social work type class. We already kind of established, we already have established a team to, you know, make sure all this happens. And this team is made up like Mr. Staley, Mr. Lamardo, Mr. Arredondo, Mr. Barret. Those are our career tech education teachers primarily. And we'd like to get more on board. I was even thinking about Ms. Fotos, too. So, so we really want to, really want to push to career tech, low-tech type classes. Dual credit will be offered for all students at Silver High School. We're already going to prior OHS students. And then we will have a dedicated teacher available to ensure the program's success. So Mr. Lamardo, kind of work with him and his schedule. So he'll be able to basically have an hour to check on dual credit, kids that are doing dual credit, meeting with colleges. Of course, I'll be involved in that as well, but he's going to be my kind of liaison, if you will. And then, all right, so kind of looking at the schedule that we have set, first hour's going to be set aside for electives. Usually, the reason we did first hours electives is because some kids do kind of have a flex schedule where they don't come in first hour. So we want to schedule a core class right off the bat, so. So that first hour open for electives and that could be senior release, it could be co-op, etc., okay? Second hour, we have a history teacher, that'll be Mr. Lamardo. The third hour will be science with Mr. Royals. Fourth hour will be English and then I said TBD because right now, I don't have an English teacher. That's one I'm in the process of hiring or maybe getting a transfer or no yet. And then fifth hour will be electives. Sixth hour is going to be geared towards math or geometry algebra two. The reason I picked those two, and we may have some algebra ones, but predominantly it's going to be geometry and algebra two because we only have sophomores in that. And then, of course, we have another history with US World being top level, so Lamardo will own the seventh hour. So is this schedule flexible? Doesn't look like it on paper, but it is. We, we can move around if we need to and adjust what is ever necessary for each junior kid that goes through there. All right, transportation needs for Western New Mexico kid, or university classes. So students, their only means of transportation to access classes at Western will just continue as it did in previous year. And then plan is to extend the service to all students. So right now, I think it's suburban or, or something. It may come to the point where we're, we're going to be utilizing a bus to get students back and forth to Western. So, but right now, it's just going to continue as it did previously. Okay, daycare was, was kind of a big concern. And one of the concerns was, well, there's not going to be a daycare much longer because they're going to move that building out and start building on the new one. So right now, like I said, we have one student, so daycare option will definitely be available. And it will be housed at Western New Mexico University. Is that correct, Miss Mylum? Okay, so until construction on the growing trees completed, that's approximately about December. We will run flexible hours for nursing, etc. Those will be available. Students will need to check in and out of the office and that's just student accountability. So if they have to go, it's like, hey, I got to go take care of my kids at daycare, just please sign out, go do it. Come back when you come back tonight, and so we know we have accountability towards everybody's app. Okay? Right now, we are looking into the grads grant at the moment. And we, can't remember her name, is it Johnson over at Sacoor?
I think it's Victoria.
Victoria Johnson, so, so I've been trying to get in contact with her and see what we need to do to bring the grads over to Silver High School. Right now, again, it's, it's one student, but it's only one student that's identified at this point in time. There might be a greater need later on. Hopefully not, but you know, you got, you got a, you know, a plan for the future, so. All right, we definitely want Silver High School slash OHS as one school. So we don't want kids to be singled out and, well, that's an OHS kid and everything else. So all students will be expected to follow rules and procedures as outlined in Silver High School and Silver Consolidated School District. As far as discipline goes, I told Mr. Lamardo that, you know, if it gets to the point where it needs to be administratively done, it will be handled by the teachers and administration at Silver High School. So we just don't want to alienate them or single them out or give them any kind of stigma. We're trying to welcome them all as one. And then funds from OHS building account, this is something Mr. Lamardo put out. Said according to Ms. McCain at central office, they have about eight hundred dollars left that could be used, that could use specifically for OHS students. So use that money will probably be done in the early fall. That would be like a field trip out to like UTIP, Indiana, and Michigan, kind of college career type things, so. And that is all I have. That was my last slide. Is there any questions?
Questions from the board? Administration, any comments or questions?
I just want to thank you for the work that you put into it, Mr. Lamardo and yourself. I know it hasn't been easy, but I know that there was a draft plan in effect as a last board meeting.
Right.
And now that, that it's, it's a go.
It's a go.
You all have really worked hard to, to solidify it, so thank you.
And one thing I will say that Mr. Lamardo's been really, I mean, I think his last contract date was last Wednesday. And up until that day, he's been moving tons of stuff over, getting those classes set up and, and you know, really excited about how those pods are coming together and everything. And like I said, we've had kids, even our Silver High School people, let's go on in there. And we tell them about it and they're just like, oh, okay, no big deal. But the students that are coming from OHS are really excited. They're like, oh, we can definitely deal with this. We can definitely do this. So it's been really positive coming from them and that's the main thing we wanted to do, is make it as positive experience as possible, so.
No, but I would agree. I think reaching out to those students and kind of getting some feedback from them really makes sense and, and I think helped kind of finalize the plan as far as, you know, do you want an entrance? Is that a big deal? Yes, no? And so, you know, identifying kind of what the concerns of the students were was important.
Right, and I think right now, the anxiety's high for them. I, I think it was much higher until we brought them over to the school and, you know, showed them exactly how it's going to roll. So I'm, I'm kind of predicting, and the reason we titled it integration, I'm just predicting like later on down the road, you know, as the year progresses, they're probably not going to, you know, see themselves as, as a different entity or part of that. But they're actually going to be part of the high school, so. That's our hope, that they actually, you know what, we're not, we're not OHS, we're not a little pod. We're Silver High School, just like everybody else. And that, that is our vision, is to make them part of Silver High School as well, so.
Very well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Coker.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
No other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be bed.
Next on our agenda this evening is pre-K after-school. Ms. Walden?
Good evening. Mr. President, members of the board, Mrs. Mylum, Mrs. McCain, thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to speak about the Silver preschool. I am very excited to be a part of this new initiative. I'm going to begin with telling you a little bit about the program and everything it offers for our children in Silver. The New Mexico preschool is a voluntary program funded by the state. It ensures that every child has the opportunity to attend a high-quality early childhood program that will prepare them for kindergarten. I was very fortunate to work as an instructional coach at the Sixth Street Elementary last year with all the kindergarten students. So this will allow me the opportunity to prepare them for that, for that grade. This program is very intentional. There's a lot of training, a lot of different initiatives that go into the program. The teachers, the instructional assistants, as well as myself, have to be very highly qualified and certified through the PED. Extensive training, like I, like I mentioned, using the FOCUS, which is the essential elements of quality for all teachers. This allows us to use the criteria, tools, and resources to make the quality of our program the best. The curriculum, which I'm very excited about, had to be approved by the state. And so that has been purchased with the startup monies. And it is aligned to the New Mexico Early Learning Guidelines. Since the grant was awarded in May, I have been working extensively with members of administration to begin the implementation of the preschool. I have received a lot of support from everyone. I appreciate all their patience with me. The projected enrollment was eighty students with the grant in both Silver and the Cliff schools. As of today, we have thirty-two students enrolled. We've had some, when, when the parents are coming in to enroll their children, there's been a concern about the hours that will have the preschool. Initially, we said seven forty-five to, to forty-five. And so they're asking if there's any way that we could start accepting students earlier and keeping them after three, like around three forty-five. I did some research and numerous pre-Ks around the state are offering this kind of wraparound service for the working parents. I strongly believe this service would be welcomed by the working parents and it might lead to an enrollment, an increase in our enrollment. If the extended day service is approved, Mr. Potts has agreed to share the information using school outages such as Facebook and School Messenger. We would utilize the newspaper, the radio, and the distribution of flyers as well. So, thank you for your time and I assure you, I will continue to work diligently for the success of the preschool. Any questions?
Questions from the board?
I guess, can you just clarify the hours that you would like it to?
We would like from seven thirty till about three forty-five, maybe four o'clock.
Okay.
Other questions, comments?
Do you anticipate more enrollment with those extended hours?
Yes, I do.
Do you have any number?
I don't. It's just the, the concerns that the, that the parents have, not concerns, but they're, they're wondering if there's something that we could offer to help accommodate them.
And we're going to get this out quick.
As soon as, yes, as soon as possible.
There's no deadline for enrollment? It's, it's open? Okay. Well, I like to see you're motivated. You're so motivated and you're so full of excitement. So that's very good, just coming that, coming from you and perfect, perfect fit. So I want to thank you for, for bringing that in.
You know, we're excited too for something new.
Thank you.
Very well, thank you. Next on our agenda this evening. Is there a representative from the SCEA here? Very well, seeing none. Next on our agenda is information to the board and first up is the superintendent, Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, members of the board, community members. And I'd like to take a, a moment to introduce the new associate superintendent. As you know, Ms. Mylum has decided to retire. Some mighty, mighty big shoes to fill. She's done an incredible job for the district for sixteen years. And so I personally would like to say thank you for all your hard work and everything you've done for this district, Ms. Mylum.
And so the new associate superintendent is Mr. Curtis Cluff. And I will let him introduce his lovely wife.
Yes, my wife, Libby. We're a free day resident of Tyrone, New Mexico, so we just got moved down here on Saturday. So we're still unpacking boxes. I was lucky to be able to find my dress shirt for the night, so. I'm excited to be here, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Where do you come to us from?
Um, my last job was principal of Grandpoint High School, but as audio will tell you, from all over. I've been state CTE director in Alaska for two years, a principal in Alaska, superintendent back in Ohio, been in building and district level administration, been assistant dean at a college for two years as well. So I've been, this is my eighteenth, just finishing my eighteenth year in the bin, so.
How'd you find us?
Uh, through New Mexico REAP and I have a lot of friends up in our part of the town that went to Western New Mexico University. Says if you're ever going to retire, go to Silver City, so.
Wow.
So they, they helped recruit me down here a little bit, so.
Cool. It's great to have you.
Welcome. Very well, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Cluff. Security up, armed security guards is next. As you folks know, we do have in the budget three additional security guards. And one of them would be, should you all choose to vote for this to take place, one would be to go to Cliff and one would be roaming between Silver High School, La Plata, and the preschool, Stout, and of course, Central Office. The other one would be roaming between Sixth Street, Herschel Schmidt, and Jose Barrios Elementary. And so we do have, as Mr. Ward had alluded to earlier in his presentation, we do have the infrastructure for the cameras and the, the door locks and things of that nature for the physical facilities. And so now we're, we're looking at the armed security guards. And rather than hiring a person to supervise those folks, as we had talked about before, a coordinator, I will actually take on supervision of those employees should the board vote positively for that to occur. And as you know, the, the situation is where the NIMPSIA, the Public School Insurance Authority, has said that there are three avenues that they, they would prefer that a district take. First and foremost would be to contract with local enforcement. And we did, Mr. Flores, Chief Flores, did take it upon himself, which again, he's been invaluable, serving in that capacity. Mr. Ed Flores, Chief Ed Flores, I'm sorry, Chief Ed Reynolds had shared with us that there's no way funding wise that they could support school resource officers from the Silver City Police Department. I know that Chief Flores has also reached out to the sheriff's department and we have the same information there. There is no funding available for them to provide those services. Secondly, from NIMPSIA, they've asked for security guard firms, local, to provide officers. And being that we don't have any resource available down that avenue, the only choice is for us to look at hiring our own. And that's, that's where we are at this present time. I stand for questions.
Any questions from the board? You'll see what's attached under BEB, Armed Security Guards, is the letter from the town of Silver City indicating that they don't have the resources at this time. My understanding is the Grant County Sheriff is going to provide us a similar letter?
We have the letter.
Okay.
We just haven't given it to Mr. Brown.
Okay.
But I have.
Are there questions or comments regarding the armed security guards?
I guess as we go to a vote, do you have that letter from the guy that said that we would have to have all of this stuff in place if that's the way we choose to go? The policies and stuff?
The, and what Mrs. Montenegro is referring to is the Ponson Associates, the insurance, I guess, agency you could say for the school district has requested that we provide a letter to kind of get the ball rolling forward to employing armed security guards. And so what, as part of that letter is they want to know how many we will be employing. And then they said, once, once they get that letter and we make that decision tonight, then we can send that to them. And we can start to, because he said, start thinking about policies as far as training. Start thinking about policies for uniforms and equipment and, you know, thinking that these are probably going to be retired law enforcement officers. Said, once you've made that decision, you're going to employ, let me know how many it is, then start thinking about policies. I've reached out to, and what I was just checking on my email was to our policy advisory service that we have through the New Mexico School Boards Association. And they've indicated that really there's already a policy, the policy is in place. And I can take a quick look at that so I can. He said, policy, BEB gives you the authority to allow carrying of a weapon on campus. No policies, no policies are needed. Permission to hire and budget authority for such is required from the board. And really that's about all he says. I suggest you use police, if not hire private firm. And that was about the information I got from him, because I was expecting that they would be kind of drafting a bunch of policies for districts that were kind of moving this direction, because many of the districts are rural and probably don't have resources of a larger town or community to get enforced, law enforcement officers from their police force. But that's, that was his response was, you know, that policy gives you the authority. And it was GBEB, which I replied to him that that, that policy deals with standards of professional conduct. And I haven't, I haven't heard back from him on that point. So I think after, we have a decision tonight to move forward with a particular number of armed security guards. We can draft a simple letter and say, this is what we've approved. But yes, I think as a board, we would need to also look at other policies, you know, for training, for equipment, for those type of policies to implement, because it doesn't sound like our policy services advisory is probably going to provide a template, so to speak, for, for that. Other questions or comments from the board? Or Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
So you said three, but we already have three, too, right? So we'll have a total of six?
We have two.
We have two.
So these three would be in addition to the two we currently have. Well, technically we have three being paid as security officers, but two at the high school would actually be armed. So the third one is going to be at the gate, is my understanding?
Yes, sir.
So do we have two or do we have three already paid?
Three currently being paid.
Two, two at the high school and there's a third one, the probation person?
All three at the high school currently. Two are actually serving security guards. And one is going to be working at the gate.
Right. He was currently serving as ISS, but he's going to be put up at the gate.
Oh, okay.
And then the plan, if I may address the boardroom.
Please.
The plan is to utilize Robert McDonald, who lives at the gate, to actually be a roving between La Plata and the high school. So that was a plan going into next year regardless of, you know, whatever the arms security is.
I guess that's a question I would, I would have is, is, and I guess the other thing that we are awaiting too as far as applying for the funding for security infrastructure that the legislature put, legislature put forward is to apply for that, we need to get, what's the term, not an application, but a evaluation from the police, Silver City Police, who went to every building and kind of evaluated.
Right. We've already done that. They're just going to finalize the paper versions of that and get those to us. It's a threat assessment of every school. So the police department has already completed their threat assessment.
Right.
And he's just finishing it, put it on paper and give it to us.
And that, that would be my question, kind of one of the, kind of leading up to this, I guess, vote tonight or potential vote tonight was, it would be, I think, nice to see what those, because I, is it like an evaluation, like a, like a scale, zero to 10? Zero being this school is not safe at all, or 10, this is a very safe school?
I wasn't involved in the threat assessment. However, the threat assessments that I've done, they just indicate where the threats lie. We don't, we didn't rate them like one to 10. We just said, you have a threat, a potential threat area in this area, and this area, and this area, and this is why. I don't know how Captain Villalobos, he's the one that's doing them. He is going to do them though. So I don't know how he did it though.
And that's what we need to move forward with the funding request, but I thought it would also be nice to see kind of as, I guess, forward for a decision on how many armed security guards, if there was like a rating of the school as a whole, if that was a part of that.
I don't know if it's a part of it, but ideally every school should have at least one. And this is, the argument that I posed is that, who's to say one school is more important than the other school? And statistics will show that most of the school shootings have occurred either in the middle school or the high school. But then you get that one variable like Sandy Hook, that was a tragedy at an elementary school. So we, we, we don't know. So yeah, we would like to have a security guard at each school, but we, we as a committee, Safety and Security Committee realize that the financial aspect of it doesn't allow for a security guard at each school. So we're doing the best we can with the money that we have. And ideally, it was planned that we'll get these security guards now. And then maybe when more funding comes down the pike from the feds or the state, the next year we hire another security guard or another two security guards. But in the end, every school would at least have one security guard. Obviously, the high school needs more than one because of the number of entrances that they have, especially now with OHS having an additional entrance. That was the ultimate plan. So we're still plugging away if it's approved. But yeah, every school needs a security guard. There's not one school that I know for a fact that said, we don't need a security guard in the school. We're good. I think every school needs a security guard.
And I think ideally that would be the case. Unfortunately, we don't have the funding. We don't have, you know, some of the primary funding in place to maybe say we can do that. And that's why I was thinking it was going to be helpful that if we had, if those security evaluations were like an evaluation score, so to speak, of how safe the school is, to kind of give us a better idea, okay, this is a school that's really at risk. Maybe we should dedicate an armed officer here versus this school, say Sixth Street. I'm not real familiar with Sixth Street other than driving around it, but it looks like it's a pretty secure school just from fencing and barriers and all that. Oh, you know, granted, if we had the money, ideally it would be nice to put, we'd have one there anyway. But to help us with the decision on hiring armed guards and where to initially place them, that's kind of what I was thinking would be a useful tool.
I think, Mr. Mymellon, I, I do think that there's a certain pattern that those are, are created. I don't know what that is though. However, if the three security guards are hired or approved to get hired, whatever the fact may be, we still have the flexibility to move those guards from school to school. So it, it doesn't mean that, because now we say they're going to float between this school and that school. If we do get, when we do get the evaluations and we find out that, well, you know, Harrison is out there by itself and this is what the threats were, would now maybe we need to roam from Harrison to Sixth Street. Again, I mean, we're sort of putting a Band-Aid on a big laceration here, but at least we're doing something. We're stopping the bleeding a little bit. And we can move those guards at our pleasure or what our needs are from school to school. Let's just say there's a big event at one school and we anticipate problems. I think we'd be able to say, okay, well, we're going to pull two guards from this school and put it at this school because of this. It's just the utilization of, of resources and officers for any specific event. Regardless of what the threat assessments indicate.
Right.
But I do know for a fact that they all indicate that there is a security guard need for each school.
Other comments from the board? Questions? Very well, Mr. Brown, you've got. Next up, the Silver Consolidated Schools Staff Dress Code Policy.
There was a request for the district to consider implementing a staff dress code. And so we called together a committee. And it consisted of various staff members from different job classifications, as well as the union, they were present. And you will notice on our page 17, the school staff dress code policy for the personnel of Silver Consolidated Schools that has been approved by that committee and is what's being recommended to the board for implementation for the upcoming school year and beyond. So basically for the general public, it says, as professionals in our schools, we realize and value the public's perception of our roles as mentors and models for students. Therefore, the following dress code will apply to all teachers, counselors, aides, secretaries, and administrators throughout the school district. It is to be applied for all the days students are present and for parent-teacher conferences. And basically, acceptable attire is going to be clothes that maintain professional and appropriate appearance. Clothes that are neat, clean, and in good repair. The rules of the staff dress code, and there's an asterisk next to that. No denim jeans with two asterisks, which we'll explain here in a moment. No skirts or slits and skirts, dresses that are shorter than four inches above the knee. No cleavage showing, neckline appropriate. No spaghetti straps, no sleeveless less than two inches unless covered by a jacket or a top. No graphic t-shirts, no hats, no showing of skin between shirts and pants slash skirts. All staff will wear their district issued ID badges, which are upcoming. Mr. Potts is looking into that for the district. No flip-flops. And the school principal or supervisor, specifically director, will have the discretion on any questionable clothing. Where the double asterisk apply, where it says jeans allowed for the following. Job-related and/or outside projects or class activities for shop, ag, PE, art, science, and custodial. Field trips are as appropriate. Possible casual Fridays are at the principal or supervisor's discretion. And the school district staff members who do not, in the judgment of the principal or supervisor, reasonably conformed to this dress code shall receive a notice from their principal or supervisor. The repeated violations or refuse to comply with the directions of the principal or supervisor by an employee could result in disciplinary action up to and including termination. And again, this is what was approved by the committee and it is what is being recommended to the board.
Questions from the board?
I just have something. I just wanted to throw it out, Mr. Brown. So, and I can't compare where I've worked to this, to the, to a school. But I know in the past where, where I work, you know, you have to be real professional. So your appearances, dress shirt, tie, et cetera, sport coat. I don't know where I've worked, normally they'll do like a clothing allowance and the employee would end up paying back. In this case, the, they would take out a certain percentage within five months to pay back if that certain teacher or staff member could not afford something nice. That's helped me in the past with me having a big family and just, you know, I'm always getting my stuff last. That clothing allowance has always helped me just to keep and meet dress code within the workplace. So I don't know if that would be something acceptable or if we can even do that within the school. But just to help out, yeah, just, just to help out those, those teachers or employee in need that can afford that and that's something.
We have in policy a uniform allowance, but it's only for the employees that are currently required to use uniforms, amendments, and custodial staff. I don't know about.
Yeah, that's, and I know I'm just throwing it out there, you know, because there, there's some employees that just, you know, if they do have a big family and that's all they have to come to work in, but.
Other questions or comments? I think it, overall, it'd be good to have some kind of, I guess, for lack of a better word, standardization, because you go from building to building. Sometimes you're, the, I guess, expectations or the dress code was, was a little bit different. And I think having some uniformity to that would be beneficial for us and, and especially with the ID badges as well. I think that's, will be important moving forward. The other que, the question that I had too is about implementation. How is, is this something that if approved will be sent out, I guess, via email to the staff to let them know this is a new policy? Or will this be something that will be introduced at new staff training or, I guess, staff training or orientation? Or both? Just to kind of prepare people if it's, if it's approved to prepare them for?
Yes, it'll be all of the above. All of the above.
Okay.
And back to Mr. Khan's point, it's, it's a great point. You're exactly. You're exactly right. There are certain employees that it would, could have a negative impact on financially. The committee was sensitive to that. And so that's the reason why, for example, if somebody works in kindergarten, we're not going to ask them to be wearing dresses or things of that nature, and especially the aides. So the administration has discretion and the administrators have been informed and are fully aware to be practical and realistic in what the expectations are from, depending on what job that these individual employees have. So that, again, thanks for being sensitive to that. That's a good point.
Other questions or comments for Mr. Brown? Very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Mrs. Millel with a district update.
Okay, first of all, we got our results today for PARC. So they're out. They're just individual scores, so they're not a school grade by any means. The plan supposedly is for next year, science will be included in our grade other than just reading and math. So that's something that they're talking about right now. So we'll see. So I just was looking at some of the elementary schools and they seem to be doing, I was pretty pleased with them. Mr. Coker looked at the ones at the high school and he was pleased with the language arts. The math, he felt they were a little lower. But the math portion of PARC is extremely difficult. So I'm not surprised we struggle with that. The other thing that I'm asking for tonight are approvals for our applications. The first one that I wanted to talk to you about is our fine arts, elementary arts application. Every year, we're supposed to do some type of a presentation to let the board know what we're doing with this money. The money is generated through our S E G. So it's not like Title I or special ed where you have a set budget. The money is embedded into our money in our operating budget. And it's based on the number of kids times your T and E, times your, times point five, times your unit value. So overall, it comes to $334,000 is what the state is saying should be enough money to fund the arts program. Now, the arts program is only for elementary kids, K through sixth. If the sixth grader's in a middle school setting, they do not count. So we picked up a couple extra, a couple hundred extra kids this year by keeping them in the sixth grade. So it did up the amount of money a little bit. What we're using the funding for is we fund four full-time art teachers. We have two half-time music teachers, one at Harrison and one out at Cliff. We also support the National Dance Institute. The kids are, they perform every year in that. And of course, with that comes the bussing that's involved, that we have to bus the kids over to their practices. And then the supplies and materials. So when you, when it's all said and done, I figured it out, it's a wash. I mean, you're not making any money on it, but there's definitely not any extra. We, as part of it, I also surveyed all the kids this year and I wanted to see what their idea was. I think they're getting burned out on art, to be perfectly honest. And I really, if I were going to be here next year, my goal would be to alternate music, art, and drama and dance. I just feel like the kids need a variety. And they have art for seven years and it gets pretty old. And it's hard for the teachers, too. So if we could get them to do other things and maybe do a semester of each or a quarter of each, I feel like it would be better for the kids. So that's what I'm going to propose to Mr. Cluff to see if he'll do it. Eighty-six percent of the kids felt like art was important to them in their education. And eighty-four percent of the kids that were surveyed said they would like to see music taught at their school. So they're missing it, too. And I just think that something that we lack in in our district is having programs for parents, presentations where the kids get to perform. And I think that's really an important part of their education. So that's my soapbox there. Okay. Then, actually, it's my last, my... Then the next one is the Title I application. It's a consolidated application and it's for Title I and Title II. Title I this year is $745,868 plus $40,000 carryover. Title I let us carry over our money from this year to next without having to wait for it. So that's really nice. And what we pay for that, the private school, we provide a teacher part-time for the remediation, the reading remediation is part of it. In personnel, we pay for one administrative support, which is Lisa Voskis, our secretary, one instructional coordinator, four and a half, 4.5 instructional coaches, six librarian assistants, and two remediation education assistants that work with our kids that are ELL students. And then we also pay for after-school tutoring with it. So that's what we use district-wide. Title II, our amount was $114,788. And this year, we're going to spend about half of that for professional development. And the other portion is to pay for recruiting and retaining special ed teachers. We're going to give the D-level teachers an increment and the EAs. We have such a high turnover and we're having such a hard time hiring teachers for these D-level self-contained classrooms because of the special needs of our students. So we're, we got that approved. So we were really excited about that. So we'll be asking for you to approve those applications tonight. And then the third one, Cindy Ruff, was supposed to be here, but she couldn't make it. So I have hers. She does the special ed application. And the total for it was $761,710. And I do believe she got to use some of her carryover for it. And then the preschool, which is the IDEA preschool for our D-level kids, is $20,214. And I will ask, we're asking for approval. And then we will need to get a signature from one of the board members on here. So those are the things that we're looking for approval tonight.
Questions from the board? Come on, you're letting Mrs. Millel off easy on her.
It's okay. It's fine.
As part of your survey, this is just prevalent, just was Harrison included in that even though Ms. Billings is currently doing music?
Yes. And the kids, most of the kids there put little side notes that they wanted to see dance.
I would see that.
And just to clarify, we have to, we have to submit these applications every year for funding. But only, only, which one was off of the S E G already? Was the arts. Okay. The other one, we just have to say that we're doing it and say that our district needs it and provide what we did, what we do with it.
And all of the applications are pretty lengthy. Yes. You saw the one, Linda made you a copy of the arts one that I did. They're pretty intense. I'm glad it's over.
Very well, thank you. Next on our agenda is, let me see, Ms. Ruff is not here, correct? Mrs. McCain.
Okay, I was going to do the presentation for the final term certificate, but Ms. Danny is here from Hilltop Securities, so she can kind of walk me through it. We had the sale on the 13th? Yes. And so we got the pricing for our bond. And once again, we were able to sell it at a premium. So she's going to give you the details because she knows better than I do.
Well, I'll try to be brief. So yeah, it's my pleasure to be in front of you this evening to report the results of last week's bond sale on the Series 2018 General Obligation School Building Bonds. This was the second $5 million tranche of the $20 million of general obligation bonds that were passed by voters in February 2017. So with this issue, the district has $10 million of authorized but unissued bonding capacity remaining. And that authorization is good through February of 2021. So with this issue, the district is on track, as scheduled, to issue the remainder with $5 million in 2019 and the remaining $5 million in 2020 or as financing needs should arise. So you should have in front of you the bond sale report that looks like this. It contains the structure, pricing, terms. There's also some comparative market data from last week. And at the very back, you'll see the Moody's rating report, which looks at the credit rating and financial summary that investors saw when we took this bond to market. So I'm going to go through some of this. But first, I'm just going to touch on a few events that happened in the markets last week that contributed to some of the market movements and some of the pricing and impacted some of the pricing that was available during the bond sale. So, you know, the retail, so the bond sale took place on Wednesday, June 13th. That was mentioned by Mrs. McCain. And there was an initial order period that went through around 9:00 a.m. to about 10:30 a.m. Central Standard Time. The markets were a little skittish last week, just in anticipation of the quarterly consumer spending report and also in anticipation of central bank monetary policy reports that were coming out also on Wednesday. So just a couple of notes about the quarterly consumer spending report. Retail sales were strong for the quarter, exceeding expectations and also signaling higher economic growth and confidence in a healthy labor market and also as a result of some lower taxes as a result of the Trump tax plan. So this served to push, put some upward pressure on bond yields, which we saw kind of play out in the shorter, shorter maturities and the shorter part of the yield curve. Also, the Fed announced a quarter percent rate hike for the second time this year. They also announced one earlier this year. And they also kind of showed their hand for what they're planning as far as monetary policy through the end of the year. So we now know that we can expect, we can expect two more rate hikes this year and potentially three more in 2019. So it's good that this bond, the timing was good for this because we're going to start seeing interest rates creep up a little bit more aggressively. So barring any extraordinary macroeconomic or geopolitical events, we'll probably see a quarter percent rate hike in September, followed by another one in December. So the market was sort of starting to price this in as we went to market on Wednesday. But to make matters a little bit more complicated, we saw some divergent central bank policy coming from Europe and from Japan. So the European Central Bank continued to maintain its extremely accommodative monetary policy, although it had previously signaled in December that it was moving off of its quantitative easing plan. It did not take any action to increase rates. In fact, it kept its rates at a negative 40 basis points. And we can probably attribute this to some of the uncertainty in the market concerning Italy and Spain and some of the events that we've seen play out over the past couple of weeks. Similarly, the Asian markets with the Bank of Japan maintained its strong quantitative easing scheme and it maintained firm control on its yield control scheme as was expected. So, you know, with some of these conflicting movements, you know, the market was a little bit jittery going into Wednesday's pricing. However, not to scare you off at all, we did extremely well in the market. So if you remember back in May, when I presented on, you know, in anticipation of going to market, we were kind of targeting the 3.5% range. And that's exactly where our pricing came in at the end of the day. We did a little bit better at 3.478% of true interest cost. And just to give you a little bit of perspective on what the rest of the market was doing, if you turn to the middle, in the middle of your sale book, there's a graph. And I'm sorry, the page numbers kind of fell off somewhere along the way. But there's a graph in the middle here that looks like this. And this shows you the bond buyer index, which is the most widely referenced index of municipal bond prices. It shows the 20 median general obligation bonds and their pricing for a 20-year maturity. And this is issued weekly. So for last, so you can see going back to 1998 or about 20 years, what the, what the pricing was doing. And then you can see that 3.88% was what last week ended at. So that's the median price that GO bonds achieved last week. And then below that, you can see at 3.48%, this is what we did. So we did a full 40 basis points better or a little bit less than a half a percent better than the market was doing. So this is excellent news and attributable to our amazing folks on the desk in Dallas and also the strong desk that Baird had, who was selected as your underwriter. So some, you know, some really solid work from those folks. So, you know, as I mentioned, we saw some fluctuation in the shorter end of the curve. So the longer end priced really well. We saw the longer end from, maturities from 2027 to 2037 price almost exactly as was bid in Baird's RFQ response. So those maturities were subscribed at one to two times. So those came in perfectly as expected. Where we had a little bit of trouble was in the first maturities. So the maturities 2019 to 2026 were undersubscribed. And so Baird came back to us and kind of bumped those, the yields on those maturities a little bit to make them a little more attractive. We pushed back on that as much as we could and we settled at a very favorable feathered pricing yield, somewhere between two basis points and five basis points through those 2019 to 2026 maturities. So not huge differences at all, still very, very favorable. And then the last change that I'll point to structurally was the 2027, 2027, 2028, and 2029 maturities were termed up into a single term bond with $640,000 of principal maturing altogether in 2029. And this was in order to take advantage of a very favorable bid. There was a 4% coupon that an investor was bidding at with a 3.15% price, which is extremely favorable. So we went ahead and termed up those bonds. And we'll see in the bond documents that a sinking fund will be established in connection with that term bond. So there'll be no, no final coupon shock or payment shock on that. So the money will be retired into the debt service fund sequentially each year so that it's, you know, it'll already be accounted for, almost as if it were paying as a serial bond. So just a recap of structure. The full $5 million, if you turn to, so the first couple of pages are just cover pages on the OS. If you look at the page, about three pages in, that has sources and uses at the top, this shows where the funds came from and where they were directed to. So the full $5 million, we were able to direct that to the project fund. And we were able to generate ample premium in order to cover all issuance costs with an additional $38,500 available to be deposited to the debt service fund. So this will reduce how much debt service will be payable out of that first coupon payment by $38,500. And then, as you can see, the cost of issuance of $105,000, that's, that covers the structuring fees, bond council fees, the fee for the rating agency, doc prep fees, you know, all the remarketing fees and all of that. And then the underwriters discount includes Baird's fees as well as underwriter council bet was retained because this was a negotiated transaction. So the total premium amount that was generated was about $168,157. So we kind of tried to size that to make sure that there were no transaction costs that would have been payable out of the district's pocket or out of your operating budget. And so that was achieved as expected. And the following page just shows you detailed bond summary statistics. And right in the middle there, you can see under ARB yield... And right in the middle there, you can see under ARB yield, you can see the true interest cost, that 3.4782%, that's the true interest cost over the life of the loan that we just talked about. And if we skip over the next page and skip over to bond debt service, this is the annual debt service that will be paid in connection with these bonds. And if you can, if you just note that the first payment, that 81 of 2019 payment is quite a bit larger than the rest of the payments. This is by design. This, this program is designed to retire debt as quickly as the mill levy will allow. So, and also to take advantage of some interest cost savings. So if you notice that, that 2% coupon in that first year allows us to upsize the principal payment in that first year in order to take advantage of some of those interest cost savings. And then you can see it diminishes over the life of the loan, which leaves the bonding capacity open for additional bond issuances for future 2019 and 2020 issuances. So that's pretty much all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Questions from the board?
Is the money on the bank?
No.
No, the, the delivery date on these bonds is expected to be around the 29th of this month. So that's when we can expect these to clear. If Mr. Frasco has any.
Yeah, just wanted to add a little something on the document that's before you. So as you recall, we spoke last time you elected to use the delegation authority that the 2017 legislation allows you to. So this is the requirement that comes along with it. And it's the document that shows you, you establish certain parameters in that resolution this month and the results of the pricing all comport with those parameters. And so this is the proof of that, that your delegated officers are required to present to you. We would ask you to just approve that, approve this document later on in the meeting. But with the presentation of this document tonight, you've satisfied that new requirement under the law that the, when you delegate authority, that the delegated officers come back and report to you as to what the final price and terms were. So that's what this document does.
Do we have that document in our packet?
I believe it's under the approval.
Final terms.
Final terms, C.
Yeah, we just don't have the actual document, but.
The only one that was given is the final terms.
That's what this is.
Yeah.
Is it in here, Linda?
No, they didn't give me that.
Well, I have it right here.
Okay.
So I will get this to you. We can make more copies available.
And that's kind of a synopsis of what is contained in more detail in this bond sale book. So the detailed annual debt service and all the pricing and terms and everything is detailed in here. And it's just briefly summarized in there just to show you that it was well within the constraints that were outlined in the initial delegation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board or administration?
So this, this is technically what I guess Item C will be on our.
Approval.
Approval?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening is Board of Education. And first up is the Finance Subcommittee Report.
Mr. Khan and myself met with Michelle and Martha, Mrs. Alvarez, on Thursday. It was this time, and we went over the financial reports. Nothing out of the ordinary. Again, we're thinking the debt is going to settle at about 3% after all of the final payments are made this month of June. And we're just looking at next year and with some concern, I think is, is safe to say. And just continuing to watch the decline in enrollment and make sure that we are not overstaffed. It has been mentioned that usually salaries and benefits should average at about 85% of the budget. And so we're going to be looking at our numbers and seeing where we can tighten our belt so that we can, you know, at least have some left over at the end of next fiscal year. That would be good. Was there anything else I missed?
No, I just, and I just want to just put in that, you know, Michelle and, and Mrs. Alvarez is doing a very good job on just doing that strategic planning with their overall budget and, and just maintaining a good financial health for our district. So I just want to personally thank you as well for, for doing that big job.
Questions or comments for the rest of the board?
My only question, and I think Mr. Brown talked to me about it. You said the average is supposed to be 85% of our operating budget for salaries.
Salaries and benefits.
Benefits, yeah.
But we're, we're at 91%, correct?
Right. This is estimated.
So why are we, why are we 6% over?
That's a good question. And that's something that we're going to be looking closely at. We'll, we'll have more firm, truer figures probably in the August, September timeframe. After school has started, the students are back and we have staff, actual staff figures for their salaries. We'll have a much truer figures. It might still be 91%. It might be 88%. It's hard to say right at this point. But right at this time, the 90.77% is, is an estimate.
And is that basically on the salary schedule, the increment schedule?
The salaries as we have them now, the positions that we continue down, that we were looking at renewing into the new year.
Yeah.
Based on the student numbers that we have now. So we won't have those, you know, actual enrollment numbers until the kids get, get back in August.
Right.
And then we can look at staffing, you know. We took a lot of time to look at staffing towards the end of this last year in trying to get a tighter control of where we have, you know, an excess and where we, where we see a need to reduce. And part of it is, you know, it's been a moving target with moving the, the kids and stuff, you know, from the middle school to the, the elementary level. You know, we're going to see savings in, in, in stuff like that, but we're looking at, this is the year that it was the cost to move all the people to the new locations. And so you can't see the savings until we actually have the plan in place. And then we're also looking at, you know, staffing at the secondary level. That's one of the things that I told you, I, you know, I was not real confident with because, you know, in an elementary setting, you have a teacher in a classroom and a number of students that they're, that they're seeing on a regular basis. I, you know, we need to find out a way of showing the numbers of students, you know, student teacher ratio at the secondary level to know, do we have an excess or how much of an excess that we have there? And then we are just going to have to look hard. I mean, it was painful to our community to talk about closing OHS, but we have to look at some of those plans because we have to look at being able to save the district and be able to continue to run the district in a fiscally responsible manner. And, you know, do we need every school site, you know? Everybody wants them because we, you know, they've always been there, but you know, can we afford to continue maintaining them when we have a decline in population? I mean, these are, you know, hard things that you have to look at. And, you know, I watched the news in Santa Fe, you know, when they were talking about closing schools because they were structurally not sound anymore and people were in an uproar to keep those kids, their kids at those same schools. Everybody has an idea about what not to do, but they don't combat the ideas of what to do to fix the problem. And that's what we need is community input to say, okay, these things need to happen or we're going to support you in making some changes because we can't maintain the status quo and expect everything to still be okay. We're bringing in security guards. You know, that's additional cost to the budget. We need to look at, okay, we're going to have to pay for that. We're not getting additional funding for that, so how are we going to fund it? You know, we have to be looking at all of that and then not just saying that's somebody else's problem because it's, we're all taxpayers. It's our problem. I have kids in, in the school district. It's my problem. You know, and so we all have to come in and stop, you know, pointing in the finger and saying, you can't do that, no, that's a bad idea to do it, but not have an answer to facilitate, you know, a, a movement towards fixing the problem.
Right.
You know? And so, and part of that is, you know, one of the things that we've looked at is our salary schedules. I mean, you know, we have some of the positions that we need to look at to rectify, you know, maybe leveling out some of the pay, you know, so that we don't have a highly, you know, I won't say overcompensated, but just to fix the salary schedules as well.
Unbalanced, yeah.
Yeah. Because all of this, all of these moving parts go to make our, our budget what it is. And until we start fixing all of them and not just look at one of them or have everybody say, don't do that, but I'm not going to tell you what you can do. I mean, because, you know, we were told, you know, in the last meeting, you know, that we should move the kids back to the, you know, back to the La Plata and, and the kindergartners back out to the school sites. How's that going to save us money? I mean, you're saying to do it, but how's it going to save us money? I never got that answer. And so, you know, people have ideas of what they want to see done, but you have to be able to, to back it up with, this is a savings. This is, you know, like Barry, when he said retrofitting the light is going to save us $147,000 a year in electric bills. That's, you know, making a movement in the right direction because you have something that you're going to do that we can afford to do and it's going to save us money in the long run and the long term, you know? So we have to look at things like that and, and, you know, maybe take some strong, hard looks at what's going on, you know, in our community. I mean, what do we do to get kids here? I mean, you can't advertise, you can't recruit students in a public school system. So how do, that is our funding. The, the students are our funding. They're the source of our funding. So how do we maintain them or, you know, with the pre-K? I think that's a positive move towards maybe growing some of our, you know, pre-K students into elementary students that will, you know, help fund our SCG, that'll keep our schools going. But we have to look for things that you can do and have an answer and not just naysay the things that are being done because everybody's scrambling to try to find a way to do it without hurting anybody. And, you know, I mean, the fallout is there, you know, on, on some occasions. People don't want to see things happen, you know, we're in a small community where we don't take change well, you know? And so it's hard to get people on board, yet we can't keep going the way we're going, you know? So we just have to look long and hard at what we're doing.
And as Ms. McCain said, if I may jump in and piggyback off of it, when I first arrived, we were facing a $2 million shortfall. And coming with a business background as well, I can tell you, whenever an organization is faced with that kind of negative cash flow, so to speak, we have to figure out what we're going to do to improve that cash flow. And from the business world, in two, two ways. You can either get more funding from your existing clients or you can get more clients. That's what we were trying to do is figure out, how can we stop this district from losing so much funding? We discussed it and that's where we came up with moving sixth grade back to the elementary schools so that we can have more students stay within our district. That instantly provides more funding for our schools. And that has indeed occurred. So that was a good move in that sense. But in order for that to happen, we needed to create space in the schools. We didn't have the space. So that's where the kindergarten coming into their own school came into play. But not only that, it helps us as an administration to be able to determine more accurately how many kindergarten teachers we're going to need. Because at one school, we might have 15 kids in a class. At another school, we might have 20. Why not have all the kindergarten teachers in the same school so that we can more accurately predict how many teachers we're going to need? So there was thought behind the process. And so what I'm going to ask the community to do is to trust that the people that are working in the school district are professionals, they know what they're doing, and they have the district's best interest at heart. Not only for the students, which of course is primary, but we've also got the added responsibility to make sure that we're looking at the, the needs fiscally as well. And we are, we've got our eyes on both areas and we're taking it very seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. One, I guess, question that I have regarding the, the higher percentage. Do we know if our, if our, on the benefit side, are we, are staff members, you know, high utilizers of, of the benefits that are out there as compared to maybe other, other communities or?
As far as picking up like the insurance and.
Right.
Um, you know, I, I don't know that we've ever looked at, you know, a trend from district, you know, because we are required, you know, if you are a benefits eligible employee, if you, there are statutes that tell us, you know, if you work the required number of hours per day, per school year, then you meet the, the criteria to become a benefits eligible employee. So we have to offer you those benefits. We can't know on the uptake whether you're going to be picking up individual coverage or family coverage. And with the increasing cost of, of insurance, I mean, I am amazed at how much insurance has gone up in just my lifetime. When I started working, I paid for a family premium, $27.50 a month to cover my family. And now it's well over $400 a month, you know? And the coverage is not better. And so, and there are things like that that, you know, we, we are represented by the New Mexico Public Schools Insurance Authority. And they go out to forbid and on a pretty regular basis to look for the best, you know, coverage for the employees because we have to meet the marketplace minimums and criteria. But we also have to give our employees something that they feel is worth, you know, their money. And in the last couple of years, I mean, I've seen our, the deductibles triple, the out-of-pocket cost triple. You know, I, I mean, it's, it's just outrageous and we're still paying more for those, you know, premium, for those, that coverage. And so it's not just Silver City, it's systemic. I mean, it is insurance right now, the way it's, it's operating and it is, there's got to be, you know, a relief somewhere because, I mean, the tiers for, the coverage for our employees have not changed in the 20 years that I've been here, you know? The salary requirements, if an employee is making under $15,000, then we pay 75% of their premium and they pay 25% of their premium. That has not changed since I started working here 20 years ago. That's in statute. I mean, things like that have to be looked at because, I mean, we're paying for things that people can't really afford to use, but you can't really afford not to have them. It's, it's a vicious cycle.
And that's what I wonder, being one of the larger employers, if, if we have a higher enrollment, I guess is, is the better word, is the appropriate word, higher enrollment of not just the staff member, but their family members, which would maybe reflect a higher percent to our, our benefits as well?
I'm seeing a trend of people opting out, you know, the younger people that are healthier. I mean, because when I was, was first hired, I was doing payroll and benefits for the school district. And almost everybody who was eligible picked up, you know, some form of insurance, whether it was individual or family coverage. And now the younger people, you know, because I think the penalty has been more acceptable to them, you know, a $600 penalty when they go to pay taxes is heck of a lot easier than paying $5,000 in insurance premiums all year long. And so people are opting out and just willing to pay the penalty. Not a lot of people, but people are starting to look that way because it's what they can afford, you know?
Very well, any other, some good discussion, but any other questions or comments on the Finance Subcommittee Report?
Is that what that is?
Yes. Moving on, next on our agenda is Safety and Security Subcommittee Report.
We, we do not meet, and we're not, we're not going to meet till August.
Very well. Next on our agenda is the Board President and the Policy Service Advisories are what I'm going to review as a first reading. And again, if we read these in their entirety, we'd probably be here reading them until about 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning. So the board has been given policies in their entirety to review from the New Mexico School Board Association of Policy Services. The first policy, so what I'll do is I'll read the policy advisory number and their title as a first reading this evening. The first one is Policy Advisory 141. It's abbreviated EE Transportation Services and EE-E Transportation Services. It's Transportation Service Provider Requirements. The second policy is Policy Advisory 142, which is abbreviated EE and EE- The second policy is Policy Advisory 142, which is abbreviated EE and EEA dash R Student Transportation, EEA dash E Student Transportation School Bus Incident Report. The third policy advisory is number 143, and it's abbreviated EEA A, Eligibility for Bus Transportation slash Walkers and Riders. The fourth policy, I might need to check on Mr. Flores here. Excuse me. Fourth policy, uh, is Policy Advisory 144, abbreviated EEA B, Special Education Student Transportation. The fifth policy is Policy Advisory 145. It's abbreviated EEA E, it's a Bus Safety Program, also abbreviated EEA E dash R Bus Safety Program Emergency Procedures. The sixth policy is number 146, and it's abbreviated EEA EA, Bus Driver Requirements, Training and Responsibilities. This includes bus assistants and substitutes. The seventh policy is number 147. It's EEA EB, Bus Purchasing and Maintenance. The eighth policy is Policy Advisory 148. You okay, Mr. Flores?
Yeah.
It's abbreviated EEA EC, Student Conduct on School Buses. The ninth policy is Policy Advisory 149, abbreviated EEA FA, Transportation to Student Activities, and abbreviation EEA FA dash E Transportation to Student Activities Responsibilities. The 10th policy is Policy Advisory 150, and that's abbreviated EEA FB, Extracurricular Activity Event Driver Requirements. That's the policy that we're going to omit. The next policy is Advisory 151. It's abbreviated EEA G, it's Student Transportation in Private Vehicles. The 12th policy is Advisory Number 152. It's a GDF, Support Staff Hiring. The 13th policy is Advisory Number 153. It's abbreviated JJJ, Extracurricular Activity Eligibility. The 14th policy is Advisory Number 154. It's abbreviated JKD, it's Student Suspension slash Expulsion. The 15th policy is Advisory 155. It's abbreviated JLCD, Administering Medicines. And the 16th and last policy advisory is 156. It's abbreviated JLCG. It's a Do Not Resuscitate Orders slash abbreviation JLGR, Do Not Resuscitate Orders. Those are our policy advisories for, uh, first reading this evening. And, uh, we will have a second reading and action on them at our, um, July meeting. Any questions or comments on those from the Board on those policy service advisories? Any comments from the administration?
No, sir.
Very well, we'll move on to Board comments. Um, I would just like to say, I hope everybody's enjoying their summer, um, getting a little bit of rest in preparation for, uh, the new school year, which will be here before we know it. I think we've had some good discussion tonight on a lot of subjects, in particular, the budget, and I think that's, um, good to have and, and, uh, good to hear. And, um, I think that's about it. I know National History Day went to DC again. They did have one finals qualifier, a senior, I believe, Gabby O'Keefe. And I think there's maybe only been one, or...
One other.
One other person from Silver that's made the finals at national, so just want to recognize Gabby, a job well done. That's all I have for comments this evening, Mrs. Fontanegro.
I would echo, you know, I hope everybody's having a restful summer. I don't know what a restful summer is like. Summers seem to be busier and crazier, and just trying to figure out the kids' day-to-day routines are challenging enough. Kudos to those teachers that do it for 10 months straight. Um, and then, we know, we just got to look at our budget, keep an eye on it. Um, and I think, I just commend Michelle with wanting to start it early, like September-ish, we're going to start looking at those numbers and try to get down to that 85% so that come this time next year, you know, if we're looking at another $1 million shortfall, we'll be able to keep our doors open, so that's most important.
Thank you. Mr. Khan?
I just want to wish everybody a good summer, hope it's going good. Um, I'm just, um, really grateful for the summer programs that keep our, our, our district students busy, like the, the lunches that they have all week long, um, the library, the reading program. Uh, I also want to, you know, thank Mr. Potts for holding that summit. Um, I've gotten a lot of good reviews on that with my parents, so, uh, hopefully it'll help develop good leaders in the future. On, on the budget, you know, I was always, being in banking, they said always watch your, watch your, watch your pennies, and your pennies will watch your dollars. So, you know, kudos to, to the, our financial team here in central office, and, you know, the way the economy is going, you just have to do that. And, um, efficiency is, is the big word, to just, to watch that. And, other than that, that's, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Well, since we're talking about budget, I'll just throw a little fly in the ointment. And, uh, if, if for whatever reason, I talked to Mr. Brown about this, if the security guards don't get approved, I don't know what's going to happen with that. We've already, um, adjusted the budget for them, and I know the money's been placed in there. And my wish list is, is a subject that a lot of people just take for granted, and it's the coaches at Silver High. It's every head coach, because in, in looking at the summer coaches or summer programs, and, and, uh, these coaches give so much of themselves, to the point that they even sacrifice their family. And some head coaches, and correct me if I'm wrong, they get paid $2,000 to be head coach, $3,000 as a stipend.
All of our head coaches, the, maybe $5,900.
Okay, so $5,900. And, and, uh, I, I, maybe if you did a cost analysis across the state, we, I don't know where we'd be at, but I know for a fact, um, Roswell and, I don't want to compare oranges to apples, but those coaches get paid a lot of money. And, and it's just something that I think us as a Board are going to have to look at because I, I know for a fact, there's, there's a couple of coaches that haven't seen a raise in, since the late 90s.
We've adjusted the salary schedule, but it's been very minimum.
Right.
I agree with you, it has been.
And, uh, what, what I'm afraid of is, and I, I know there's some coaches that are getting at the end of their time, they're at the twilight of their career. And what, what fears me as a parent is that we have quality coaches here, and we're going to see a mass exodus, because they're going to get tired of dealing with the parents, they're going to get tired of dealing with the kids. It's just a different group of people out there, and I see it as a little league coach that you, you, you just, it's, it's a headache that you sort of want to walk away from. Unfortunately, it's not the same type of generation that I grew up in. And, and back then, when my coach said something that was gospel, I never questioned him. And it's not that way. In talking to several coaches, uh, I'm in shock by sometimes, some of the way that their athletes treat them back. And, you know, I know there's a couple of coaches that they do summer programs, they do scouting, they do weightlifting, and there's one program that they figured out their cost per hour is like eight cents per hour, that's when they get paid extra to do. And whether you like athletics or not, these coaches sacrifice a lot. I know I'm going to get the faction of people that say, "Well, you know, they choose to be athletes, they choose to be coaches," but, um, it's a big deal to be an athlete, and it builds character, and, uh, we're lucky to have the coaches that we do. And at some point in time, I would like to take care of them, and obviously, in a financial way, and give them what we deserve. And I know, we talk about budget here, budget there, but it, it goes back to the old adage, you don't know what you have until it's gone. And that's what scares me, is in talking to a couple of coaches, they're thinking, they've talked to me, and they said, "I don't know how much longer I could do this." And they obviously don't do it for the money. They don't do it for the money, they do it for the passion. But it's just something that we as a Board are going to have to look at down the road and say, "Hey, how do we take care of these coaches?" I mean, look, we have a coach that has brought us eight state championships, and I'm sure this coach is getting recruited by everyone and their mother for him to go over there and do what he's done over there, would do what he's doing over here, over there. He wouldn't shock me to see that he's getting recruited by colleges, but he chooses to stay here, and we're lucky to have him. But that goes across the Board, I think, for all our coaches. And that's my soapbox, I'll get off of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. I, I will add, you know, on, on comments, I think, um, comments about the budget, I think for us, it's going to be key looking at enrollment next year, and I think that's going to be kind of our, our key component to look at is, is where's our enrollment going, are we still going down? And if we're going down, are we going down 150 like we've done the last couple of years? And if that's the case, we're going to have to make, look at, at making cuts or making changes that folks probably aren't going to like, but, um, will need to, need to make. And then, speaking to the coaches, I, I will also, I guess, tip my hat to many of the coaches that are out there in the summer programs, because that's given activities for kids to do, including my own kids, would probably still be in bed until nine or 9:30, when the summer programs out there are saying, "All right, we need to be in offseason, we need to be in the weight room, be here at seven," because a lot of those coaches have to eight, have to work at eight or nine, and, and so, they're coming in early to make sure those kids are, are, you know, getting their strength and conditioning preparation for, for the upcoming year, but they're also helping those kids get out of bed during the summertime and giving them a purpose. So, I will tip my hat to them, to them as well. And then, I would also like to ask Mr. Potts, I know he's got the Google Summit coming up, how many folks do you have, uh, registered for, for that event?
So, um, this Wednesday is Students First, and it's, um, fifth, it's next year's sixth and seventh graders. And we currently have, um, 90 students. Along with those 90 students, we have nine teachers who are volunteering the whole day to take care of those students. Um, and then Thursday and Friday is our teacher summit, and we are currently at 135, um, teachers that will be attending, that's on their own time, no stipends or anything. And those teachers are from Silver, Cobray, um, Renzi, Lordsburg, Santa Fe, Phoenix, um, so all of our, um, and our, our presenters are coming from Vancouver, Washington, Atlanta, Georgia, uh, Canada, Ontario, Canada, and...
Nice. That's the third, this is the third year?
This is the third year.
Third year? Yep, again, giving some, some kids something to do this summer, and, uh, and also some teachers some new tools. I will still kind of put in my, throwing in my side is Gmail as it was this morning, as Ms., Mrs. McCain knows. I didn't see that attachment there, I was like, and my Outlook mail, the attachments are right there, I can see them the first thing. Gmail is, ask those folks if they'll do something for, for Gmail training.
There's a new look coming out, you'll like it.
Hopefully, it's better. Mr. President? I, I gave some follow-up comments, so I'd like to throw it out there to the Board to, to follow, if you have any follow-up comments, uh, on the comments, please feel free, Mr. Flores.
If I forgot, and forgive me, but I understood that you received a very prestigious award in the last two or three weeks, and, uh, I don't know, it had to do with athletics, obviously?
Volunteer.
Can you expand on that a little bit?
You know, you're speaking of myself, an award that I received, Mr. Flores?
Yes.
I did receive a distinguished, um, I think it was achievement...
Don't be humble.
...recognition, award from the New Mexico Athletic Trainers Association.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That's all I have.
Other comments from the Board?
I'll just pass the torch to you for this year.
Very well. Thank you. Um, next on our agenda is Open Public Comments. Do we have any comments, requests submitted? Very well. And we'll move on to action items, and first up is our Consent Agenda. Budget Finance Purchasing, A Financial Reports through, and remind me, I always get our Consent Agenda, it's, uh, 1A Budget Finance Purchasing, Financial Reports, R B Budget Adjustment Requests, C Award of Bids and Proposals, D Donations, and E Conflict of Interest Disclosures. That's our first action item, I believe.
Yes.
Um, Mrs. McCain, do you want to present that information to the Board?
Yes, I am requesting approval of checks written for the month of May in the total That number will triple next month, because we're paying out all the school contracts. Then, Budget Adjustment Requests. Um, I gave you a brief explanation, um, when I handed out the Budget Adjustment Request. This year, the Public Ed Department, they're very, very shorthanded, and so, they were, um, they got our awards and our applications for a lot of the grants that we use regularly, regularly during the school year, very late. Um, I mean, usually, we have them in April, and we're, the applications are in and approved by this time, and a lot of the applications, we didn't even get till late May, early June. And so, um, these would have been just part of the normal budget that you were approving, but in fact, I'm going to have to do them as a Budget Adjustment Request. These are all to impact the 18, 19 school year. These are awards that we, um, have gotten and, and been, and been awarded, but I just need to have approval to budget, um, to adjust them into our budget, because our budget would have had to been held and not be approved today if I tried to get these in as well, okay, because of the late timeframe that our, um, directors and stuff receive the information. So, we have our K3 Plus Extended School Year, which is going to be at stout. It's a, um, they opted for the July, August program, they have to teach for 25 days, um, in that timeframe, and they were awarded $138,959.70. That is based on the number of students that they anticipate, um, participating in this program. Should they have, any of those students not show up for, um, um, over 10 days, they will lose funding for those students. So, it's very, very, very important that the kids that they have recruited show up for all of the, the sessions during that 25-day period. Um, we had our Attendance Success Initiative. That is one that Mr. David Holstein was in, talking about. It was called the Truency, um, Truency Coach last year, and now, it's the Attendance Success Initiative, and they have funded us for two staff members this year. And so, um, they've awarded us with $136,000 to be used at the upcoming year, and it's going to be used all the way from our elementaries through the high school. Um, they've signed contracts with all of the, the, um, school administrators to provide him and whoever his counterpart is with the information that they need to make it a success, working with improving, um, and attendance from the elementary level all the way to the high school level. Um, our 24-106 is our Idea B Grant, that is the application that can be, um, mentioned to you for Cindy Ruff. That is our regular, um, Special Education, um, award that we receive, and it is in a total of $761,710. Um, the counterpart to that is the Entitlement Idea B Preschool Grant that funds, um, the Special Education Preschool Program. That is a total of $20,214,000, I mean, $214 for this upcoming school year. And then, our Title II, um... And then our Title II Award is another one that Candy mentioned to you that'll be used for professional development, based on the requirements of PED. We have to use it for professional development. And it will also be used to fund the, I wanna say hazard pay, but retention stipends. And that is in a total of $115,470.58. My total differs slightly from Candy's in that I budget the carryover that they anticipate as well, which was $658, I think. So anyway, all of these bars I'm asking for approval on so that we can start using them because the K-3 Plus program starts July 2nd, so I can't wait till the July board meeting to ask for approval for these. And that's why I have them on the agenda for today. We have, in bids and proposals, we had one bid that was out there that Mr. Ward spoke about. It was the Altamorano Side Improvement Renovation Bid. And that was, Runyon was our only offer on this bid, and so they did get it. The total bid is in the amount of $322,866, and that is for the side improvements out at Altamorano. And then last but not least, we had donations that came in after our last board meeting. We had $1,200 that came in in the matching gift, the Freeport Matching Program that they're, Employee Matching Program that they're doing. It was first, and it was earmarked for Silver High Softball, an amount of $2,200. And then we had the Rotary Foundation who sent in $500 for a donation for National History Day. And then one that wasn't listed, but it was actually in with the others, was Air Methods Corporation contributed $850 to Silver High Soccer. And so you have a copy of that, but it wasn't listed in here, intended. And for all of these items, I seek approval today.
Questions from the board? Mrs. McCain, on the bid for the Altamorano, that is gonna come from, is it SB 9 or HB 33?
HB 33.
HB 33?
Yes.
Very well. Any other comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda items as presented, which is one, budget, finance, A, financial reports, B, budget adjustment requests, C, awards of bids and proposals, and D, donations.
Still moved.
Got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you. Next on our action items is transportation, A, bus drivers, B, activity drivers, C, feeder routes. Do we have any of those to review?
Mr. President, we do not have anything tonight.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is individual action items, and first is consideration and approval of Silver Consolidated Schools Armed Security Guards. Mr. Brown, would we have yourself or anyone else presenting any additional information on that?
No, sir. I guess I would just like to clarify with Mr. Flores what he was alluding to during his comments. Were you saying that if, and I certainly don't wanna put words in your mouth, but were you saying that if, for some reason, the board doesn't approve this, that you'd like to see some of the funding go towards possibly increasing the monies available for head coaches?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, thank you. But no additional information regarding armed security guards?
Clarification I have is just on the, on the, I guess what's built into the budget is for three?
Additional.
Three additional. And that would be in addition to what's already present at the high school, because the high school is the only area where we have any security guards. And there's currently three.
Unearned.
Right.
Yeah, two security and one that was more of a remediation coach that's, I guess, gonna move into the...
Into the parking area. Okay. On those three additional armed security guards, what did we determine, a salary or...
It would be the starting salary up of our current security guard.
Oh, would use that as a salary schedule?
Yes.
Thirty-three thousand is what I saw in the increment, or in the salary schedule?
I thought it was 30,900.
Was it? Okay. Maybe I added 10%. It is in the salary schedule.
Yes. That are part of the budget to be approved.
Very well, the, I guess the comments I would add is for the board and others is, you know, ideally, I would agree, you know, it'd be nice to have an armed security guard at every building site. With our, with our budget constraints, I think moving in a step-by-step fashion, I think certainly at Silver High School, it's important at least to have one. I think at Cliff High School, that would be another area that is of concern as kind of a primary, I guess, where are we, a starting point? So that would be at least two in my eyes, we're still trying to address the safety issues and also be mindful of our budget. But I will entertain a motion to suggest either a number of armed security guards from members of the board?
I thought it was three, it said for three, correct?
Three new positions, yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve what's been, I guess, looked at in our budget for three armed security guards?
Mr. President and members of the board, I move to make a motion for approval for the Silver Consolidated Schools Armed Security Guards.
We've got a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of individual action item B, consideration and approval of Silver Consolidated Schools Armed Security Guards, which just to clarify would be in three new positions, armed security guards, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you. Next on our individual action items is C, consideration and approval of final term certificate for general obligation school building bond, Series 2018. And this was the document that Mr. Carrasco presented to us earlier. This is the final term certificate of the Silver Consolidated School District Number One, County of Grant, New Mexico, general obligation school building bond, Series 2018. Any other information to present on this from administration?
No, sir.
Throw explanation? Very well, entertain a motion to approve item C, consideration and approval of the final term certificate for GEO School Building Bond, Series 2018.
Still moved.
Got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Very well, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you all for your presentation, thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is item D, consideration and approval of the Silver Consolidated Schools Staff Dress Code Policy. Any more information from administration on that policy?
No, sir. Not at this time.
Very well, I'll entertain a motion for item D, approval of item D, consideration and approval of the Silver Consolidated Schools Staff Dress Code Policy.
I still move.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I guess I would just say, I'm not into like, taking on a whole bunch of extra policies for our district, just because I feel like it becomes really regulated and so much in policy and not a lot of movement. However, we also, on the flip side, then we don't have uniformity throughout the district. So it's like, it's, I don't know, it's frustrating. So I will approve it with the understanding that Mr. Brown, you know, has talked to administration and that they're gonna be understanding and that it doesn't become more burdensome for administration or our district.
I would also agree, you know, adding additional policies after we just had a first reading on 15 or 16 of them is, seems a little bit overbearing at times, but I think if administration moves forward and is able to, I guess, relay the importance of staff looking professional in their duties and enforcing it, I think it can be a positive thing for our district as well. We've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes, thank you. Next on our action item list, individual action item E, consideration and approval of the Silver Consolidated Schools Fiscal Year Budget 2018-2019. Mrs. McCain, do you have any additional information?
No, just that the salary schedules and increment schedule go in conjunction with that budget.
And those are attached to our packet, or were attached to our packet, the 2018-19 increment schedule, which was approved in collective bargaining, the 2018-19 salary schedules, which was also approved, those were approved on the...
May 24th.
24th, okay. And then also attachments were the revenue report and the expenditure detail.
And those are in the format that PED requires us to present the budget for their...
Can you, yeah, can you, what's the difference between estimated and projected?
The estimated is actual activity for this year, the 17, 18 year. Projected is the actual...
What we think is gonna happen next year. Okay.
And that has that deficit of what you kind of presented as well, I think 800, just over 880,000 dollars.
Initially, that we balanced it out, so...
So where would that, that would be in the revenue, right? In the revenue report?
Well, the expenditures have to balance, and so we have to balance to the numbers that they present to us.
Okay. So our overall budget is gonna be down, is it safe to say from the 22 million down to the 21,150?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That's the SCG.
Other questions or comments from the board? Or from Mrs. McCain?
I guess we talked about this in our Finance Committee, but it was just interesting to me that the increment schedule and the salary, salary schedules are approved before the board approves it. And so I think Michelle and I have both kind of gone back and forth, what comes first? Collective bargaining or the board? And so some clarification on that. And then maybe just us looking at, because basically if this makes up nine, almost 91% of our budget, this is what needs to be addressed if we're gonna be able to bring it down to 85. And so I stand strongly behind, you know, really getting these in line with where they need to be to be able to make this district continue to run and open its doors and pay its bills.
And included in those salaries and benefits are the salaries and benefits for the coaches and any of the activity sponsors and as well as the substitutes for this year.
And I did go through that schedule, just the increment schedule, there is an additional increment for summer program, there is additional increments for weight room. So although the head coaches start at 59, summer program is additional, weight room is additional. So it, yeah, I think it's important to, although you see that one number, look at, and then how many assistant coaches and that kind of thing, to see what we are paying for the program already. Yeah. It can be deceiving because you gotta add all those numbers together.
One request that I have on the increment schedule and looking at it, and it's kind of always, since I've been on the board, kind of been presented in that same kind of format, it's, on the left side is your activity or your duty and the increment amount, and then there's always a space. And I was wondering if we could, every year, go ahead and, okay, identify the person that's, I mean, some of them are gonna be easy, but others are...
Those are all at-will positions, and so you can't technically say they have the job until they sign the new contract the new year.
Okay.
So even though we know, or generally, it's generally considered that the head coach from last year is coming back this year unless they resign or they let him go, until the athletic director submits that to the payroll department, completed, we really don't assume that everybody's gonna be back.
You know, I'm just thinking, as the year moves forward, it'd be nice to kind of fill in those blanks with a person and say, "Okay." Because I think when we added the weight room positions, there was a question, well, it's 400 and somewhat thousand in total, but we don't always fill all the positions.
Right. It's about 425,000 plus 23.55% in benefits, which...
And I think that's his main thing, is just knowing how, how many of those positions are filled.
They get filled right up until the very last, for the very last end of the year. Mr. Oaxaca is submitting information to Kathy on a monthly, weekly basis. I mean, the majority, I would say probably 70% of it is completed, you know, up front between, you know, middle school, high school and Cliff. But there are a lot of positions, like, I mean, we have a rotating door for like soccer coaches and stuff like that, where it's hard to get a grip on who's gonna come back next year.
So could we look at last year's? Is that, what do you budget off of? Do you budget the whole thing?
Yes.
You budget the whole thing?
Because ideally, it could be filled, and if you don't...
Okay, so you budget the whole thing, even though some positions do not get filled throughout the year?
Right.
Well, I think it'd be good if, if, just as kind of a, I don't know if we wanna make it a board report, but...
Reference, yeah.
Just reference, okay, this is, this is who's occupying that position or that increment as we go through the year. It would be nice to see, getting off subject a little bit, but kind of speaking to Mr. Flores's comment and Mrs. McCain, you know, some of those positions have been a revolving door, and it's, that's not a, in my opinion, not a good thing for the kids, it's not a good thing for the program. It's not, it's not good at all, and perhaps it speaks to some degree to the amount of the increment, but that's a discussion for another time. So we'll get back to our individual action item for item E. Any other questions or comments for Mrs. McCain? I will ask, it's due to the PED.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And that's in statute, just like the other date was in statute. I mean, if you look at state statutes, there is a time that the State Secretary of Education mandates that we have to have our budget to our budget analysts. They set that date, I had the email, I presented it to Mr. McMillan and Mr. Brown and Candy to show you that. He set that date in January for my budget to be due on May 23rd to him, because then there's a process of making it what they need it to be, adjusting it, looking for more information and asking for additional documents, that we have worked up till, I got an email at 6:40 on Saturday morning asking for more information. I mean, so we start May 23rd and until the state statute says the 19th, it has to be signed and, you know, sent to PED so that they can actually start funding those budgets because that's just two weeks away before we start the new fiscal year. So those requirements are in place and they are in statute.
And a follow-up question is you, so you... And a follow-up question is, you, so you haven't received that final, on Friday you emailed us saying that there was an additional review.
The final review, yeah.
You've not received information back on that, have you?
No.
Other than a request for more information?
I checked right before I came in here, there has not been.
Okay. Very well, we've, I'll get back to my agenda, I believe we, do we have a motion, did we make? Did we have a motion?
No.
I'll entertain a motion then for item E, consideration and approval of the Silver Consolidated Schools fiscal year budget 2018-19.
Aye, so moved.
We've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second, do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes, thank you. Next on our agenda for individual action item is F, consideration and approval of a resolution for cooperative agreement, project number SP-1-19, bracket 979, bracket, control number HW2L100379, which I believe is the resolution that Mr. Barry Ward spoke to on the paving project.
Yes.
And that attachment was in the packet, but I don't recall exactly.
Programs one.
Probably was under Mr. Ward, under his program presentation, yes. So that, thank you. That's about it. And now I got kicked out of board book for inactive use, inactivity. That resolution is in the amount of, total project cost 88,121, which the Department of, New Mexico Department of Transportation is going to contribute 75% of, which is 66,91 dollars, and the Silver Consolidated School District will contribute 22,030. Any more information from administration on this individual action item?
No, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to approve item E.
F.
F.
I make a motion to approve the resolution of cooperative agreement, project number SP 119 979, control number HW2L100379.
Got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes, thank you. Next on our individual action item is item G, consideration and approval of the elementary arts application, 2018-2019 school year, which was also included in your packet.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the elementary arts application, 2018-19 school year.
Got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and I just want to confirm that application was...
It's part of the SCG, so there's.
Oh, it's part of the SCG. Very well, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes, thank you. Next on our individual action item, it's tonight, is item H, consideration and approval of the consolidated ESEA application, 2018-2019 school year.
Mr. President, members of the board, I make a motion to approve action item H, consideration and approval of consolidated ESEA application, 2018-19 school year.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes, thank you. Lastly, on our individual action items for this evening is item I, consideration and approval of the IDEA-B special education application for the 2018-19 school year. Any additional information from administration on that item?
No, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Khan, second, thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes, thank you. Very well, next on our agenda is future meetings and proposed action items, A is our next scheduled work session, a regular board meeting is July 16th, the item B is the 2018 Leadership Retreat, which is in Taos, July 13th and 14th, and item C is the 2018 Annual Convention, December 7th and 8th in Albuquerque. Anybody have plans to make any of the, that meeting in Taos or Albuquerque?
No.
No plans at this time?
I might do Albuquerque.
Okay. If you all have decided to go to either the Taos Retreat or the Annual Convention in December, please let Mrs. Hernandez know as soon as possible. Next on our agenda this evening is open public comments, do we have any submissions for open public comments? Do we have any public comments?
Well, I just want to wish Candy well, none of us did that in our comments, and...
It's okay, it's fine.
No, it's not.
Yeah, it is.
No, it's not, we wish you well, thank you for your service to our district.
Yes, Mrs. Mylum, thank you for your service to the district, your service while I've been on the board has been invaluable, few good times and tough times, and I appreciate that. So, hope you enjoy, and you're not actually technically leaving, because aren't you going to like a .25 or something for a little bit?
Maybe. For July, yes.
For July.
For July. Up until at least through July 16th, which is the next board meeting, put that on your Next, if there's no other comments.
I just wanted to also, you know, I wasn't ready to let you go yet, I thought you were going to be here next month again, so that's why I didn't say nothing.
I don't think so.
But thank you for everything that you did for our district, it's all...
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Candy.
You won't be missed.
Yes.
No, you won't miss that.
That's not true.
Very well, next on our agenda is executive session, close pursuant to 10-15-1, H2 through H9, NMSA 1978, A, H2, limited personnel matter staffing, and B, H7, attorney-client privilege litigation reports. Mr. Brown, if you don't mind having a short meeting for executive session, members of the board, I would like to entertain, I think it needs to be a roll call to go into executive session.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Montenegro?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz?
Yes.
Okay, the time is 8:55, we'll go to executive session, thank you all.